Welcome to June's third meeting of Capitola City Council and successor agency of the former redevelopment agency, our budget hearings, roll call please.
Councilmember Harlan.
Here.
Councilmember Botchard.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the review of justice for all.
Sue, would you give us a list of additional materials received, please?
Yes, we received a fiscal year 1516 council follow-up slides and also a memo from the Finance Advisory Committee with their recommendations, an email from Marie Martarella regarding Monterey Park, and two letters from the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission Bicycle Advisory Committee, ones from Amelia Conlon, the Director of Bike Santa Cruz County, and the others from Andy Ward and Daniel Kostalak of the Bicycle Advisory Committee with the RTC.
Thank you, Sue. It's time for public comment, any members of the public who'd like to address the council on any issue not on the agenda for this evening, please step forward. Comments from staff?
No comments.
Counsel.
Oh, this weekend, car show, be there.
Both days, right?
Both days.
Okay. Do they do the cruise?
Oh, yeah, cruise Saturday morning.
What time?
NASCAR coming in, cruise comes in at nine.
Okay.
NASCAR's coming in at 11:00, so everyone's awake already.
Really?
Yeah.
Are they coming with their engines loud again like they did before?
There is no other setting. It's either on or off, but it's 11:00, not 8:00, so...
Better, because last time it was early.
People will be awake, and they'll be more awake when they come through, they'll just be a little more danger to the public because they'll be driving in the streets with other cars, other than that's fine. Is it 10:00 or 11:00? 10:00, okay. Kind of fun.
Oh, that's good. It's always been like 5:00 AM, 5:00 or 6:00 or something?
Well, 7:00.
7:00, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We move to a presentation from the Financial Advisory Committee regarding the proposed 2015-16 financial budget. I told Nathan we'd let him get them first so he can go home.
What?
I'm gonna stick around for a while.
You should stay to the end.
Make them sweat out.
Mayor and City Council Members, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to represent and speak to you from the perspective of the Financial Advisory Committee. Before I start, though, I'd just like to thank the group that meets on a regular basis and kicks these things around in an open and honest way with some pretty significant dialogue, some definite points are made by each of the members, and it's unbelievable the amount of education and background and experience they bring to the table. So, the reason I preface it with that is that our thoughts and concerns and comments made in this particular report, we want you to know is not done in a rather willy-nilly fashion, it's done with a great deal of thought and a variety of perspectives that are represented at the table. To quote Dickens, although it was from the Age of Enlightenment, in The Tale of Two Cities, "This is the best of times and this is the worst of times."
Take up your mic.
The best of times meanings means the state of California is experiencing, along with many cities, an incredible impact on their financial status, meaning that they're receiving many more funds than they had anticipated. The city of Capitola is in the same kind of position at a much smaller ratio than the state of California, but you're looking at $934,000 and some change of revenue beyond expected income. So, what does that mean? Well, you can be very liberal in the spending, or you can look at the future and hope that we won't have the worst of times to deal with in the near future. As you know, funding in California is completely unpredictable. Having spent 37 years in education, there was never a way that I ever felt comfortable knowing that the budget was balanced and would be exactly as it was predicted to be as we received it from the state. There's a lot of really positive things going on, but like districts, school districts, I would hope the city of Capitola would look at our recommendations as a way to meet the needs of the community, as well as think about the future. So, the four areas that we've identified, and I understand you have this in front of you, are to put money into a PERS contingency reserve, and as you know, the city and school districts and other people are going to be hit with an incredible impact by PERS. And we need to think, Financial Advisory Committee believes, that we need to think about long-term and at least putting aside money so that if something does happen in the future, that is unpredicted regarding PERS, you've got some money there that certainly can work in either advantage. You also would have the power to remove that money from PERS should the PERS thing all of a sudden resolve itself at the state level, which there's, my understanding, not much hope for. We believe that money needs to be put into the CIP program, Capital Improvement, because your city and the members that live here, residents that live here, are entitled to experience some of the benefits of this extra funding through the CIP program and capital improvement projects that are on the books and are at the present time not funded. We believe there needs to be money put into a facilities reserve for future, again, thinking about the future and what things may need to be done, things like roofs, improvement in buildings, and things that are unpredicted, not predictable, like bathrooms and other things that are going to come in the future. And then that we believe that through your wise leadership, that $334,000 should be kept in the general fund for you to make some decisions on how that money can best be spent. So, as you look at this, we're suggesting $300,000 be placed in the PERS contingency, $200,000 be put in capital improvements, $100,000 for facilities reserve, and $334,000 be put into, as I mentioned earlier, into the general fund. I would be willing to answer as many questions as I possibly can. One of the things I want to make sure that you understand is, the Financial Advisory Committee is trying to maintain their philosophy and position by making sure that their overall city reserves are increased whenever there's an opportunity, that updating it and trying to reach some kind of leveled benchmark of similar cities, and you've had a comparison study done, that we are not near even the middle, that we need to consider, from the Financial Advisory Committee's point of view, moving those reserve funds up in comparative cities so that we are beginning to be moving towards the center. I know that this is something that the council has been looking at for a long period of time, this happens to be an opportunity for you to do that, and kind of not one full swoop, but at least to increase it a little bit at a time. Any questions?
Questions in council?
In terms of the PERS situation being unpredictable, what was your reason for stating that, what are some of the thoughts on that?
Well, as the financial manager of the city will tell you, you have a responsibility to meet some PERS requirements for their benefits in the near future for retirement, and it is an incredible amount of money. Mark, I'm sure, will review some of that today in your report from him on what you are looking at regarding your financial status. But it is a substantial amount of funds, and this would literally, if things turn out to be true, the way that is projected, would be a small drop in the bucket, maybe a cup full, I guess, if you look at it that way. Does that answer your question, Josh?
I might add that, you know, there was unanimity in the Finance Advisory Committee about increasing reserves, the only place where there was some debate is in what to call them. So, you know, rose by any other name, whether it's a PERS reserve fund, whether it's Economic Uncertainty Reserve, whether it's contingency reserve, but we are woefully shy of cities our size. I might also point out, with regard to financial expenditures, we just heard a report as good or better than any consultant we pay for from a city committee of unpaid except for staff members, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. And I do thank you, Mayor, very much for clarifying that this was a unanimous decision, and the people who sit on that committee, like I said, are highly regarded by people in your community, I know they're regarded by you, you oftentimes have the responsibility of appointing them, and they take their job very seriously.
Thank you to you and the Finance Committee, and Nathan, please stick around, you may have some questions by the end of the meeting.
I plan to stick around for a while.
Thank you very much. In all fairness, I'm gonna allow the Bicycle Committee to address the council on their proposal.
Good evening, Council Members, I'm Daniel Kostalak, I'm the alternate, your alternate to the Bicycle Advisory Committee at the Regional Transportation Commission, and tonight with me is Andy Ward, the other appointed member by you to the committee, and also a couple of other people that we've been meeting with you, Amelia Conlon from Santa Cruz, Bike Santa Cruz County, and Steve Piercy, who has been working diligently with the school district as well, as you well know. We just wanted to take an opportunity to put in our pitch for actually putting some type of sub-line item into the CIP budget for bicycle facility projects. The city revised and adopted in 2011 a revised version of their City of Capitola bicycle plan, which was a document that over the years was a necessary tool to have in place to apply for certain California state grants for bicycle facilities. That whole dynamic and how those grants are being done has changed somewhat, but the part of that bike plan included a project list that the council approved at that time in 2011, and the project list, some of the items have changed and some remain even more relevant now than they did at the time, and more important than at the time it was approved by the council in 2011. Do primarily to, you know, the bad recession we had, we haven't made a lot of progress in actually completing these projects, but we used this project list, now that times are getting a little rosier, as you've just heard, to identify some of the items that seem to be either low-hanging fruit and very inexpensive, and/or items that now have actually become actual viable options where in the past, when we developed the plan, there wasn't any real standards. Primarily, what I wanted to point out is, in your 2011 project list, there was identified trying to do studies, safety studies, as to how to improve the safety for bicyclists as they went through your three freeway interchanges in the city. Now, at this point in time, there is a standard developed and being applied in California cities to develop green zones where, to warn motor vehicles that they're coming into conflict zones where they won't expect them, merging, where people are trying to merge onto freeways at 50 miles an hour and not anticipating the bicyclist. So, we've looked at the project list, to summarize, we've looked at the project list, we've gone for some low-hanging fruit, some signs that are important for safety in a few locations, we're recommending that we follow the lead of City of Santa Cruz and the County of Santa Cruz, who are starting to identify locations where these conflict zones are and applying this green treatment, and we've also identified a couple of other specific repair areas that are becoming quite hazardous at this time. I'll summarize by just saying, our primary interest is to try to set up the tool in the budget so we can monitor and keep track of how we do make progress as the years go forward in completing the project list and new projects as they come available. The climate action plan that you're going to be dealing with in the next year or two also takes advantage of points for bicycle facilities, too. So, I know this council has always been pro-bicycle, I see all riding out there from time to time, and we're hoping that we can do more to make it safer for all of us. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Anybody else have questions?
I'm always curious, do the sheroes add safety?
The sheroes are a somewhat new phenomena, not phenomena, but an appropriate standard for bicycle facilities. They were developed initially about, in the last 10 years, out of the city of San Francisco to identify that a location where a bicycle could be in a travel lane and not get doored when somebody opened a door where they're parallel parked. Drivers and motor vehicles expect that bicycle to stay way over to the right, but actually the vehicle code sees the bicycle as another vehicle out there on the roadway, has the right to the lane when it needs to take the full lane. And these sheroes were initially designed to give everybody that heads up that the bicycle should be more out into the center of the lane. In the last two years, that standard decal has been expanded in its use to identify when it really is appropriate for those bicycles to be out there in that full lane. For instance, when you would come now, where we would add them here would be a good location is where we've identified coming down Wharf, we created a bike lane coming up, and we had to squeeze the downhill lane into a 10-foot lane, the bicycle needs to be out there in the center of that, and we do have signage on a post, but now that shero is an appropriate identifier that it's appropriate for that bicycle to be out there. It's a long-winded way of saying, yes, the state of California has sanctioned those and sees those as another tool in providing additional safety through awareness for both the bicycle and the motor vehicle driver as to the bike's location.
It sends a reminder to the vehicles.
And to the bicyclists, I mean, there's a wide range of education as to what, how people, what they know about where they should be on a bicycle. And so, this also reminds that bicycle that, you know, you do need to be out there in that center lane, in the middle of that lane for your own safety.
I've been hit off my bike many times by doors.
Daniel, on the Bromer to 38th, actually, it's Bromer Avenue from 38th to 41st, is that correct?
Correct.
That's our section there. Has the county made bike improvements along Bromer to that point?
Yes.
They have?
Yeah, yeah, there's a nice bike lane all the way from 38th Avenue, which the first 100 yards is ours, Capitola's, all the way to the new improvements through Arena Gulch.
Okay, and so, when you go across that intersection, you go on to Jade Street, right? When you cross intersection?
Coming this way, yes.
Is that bike lane improved already there?
Yes, we have a...
So, what we're doing is, we're linking all the way through Arena Gulch, all the way through Bromer on through, to at least Jade Street Park, is that correct?
Yes, and from Jade Street Park, you can work your way on Class II bike lanes all the way down through the village and then out of the, once you're headed up out of the village, all the way south to, I can't say for sure, but I would think almost for sure to Watsonville.
Okay.
Mayor Norton, it's not just a continuation of the path itself, but really, it's in many ways also a safety issue, the quality of the pavement on both sides of that road is abysmal.
Okay.
And, you know, in my opinion, is a safety hazard for inexperienced cyclists.
And we do have, we do have an item on our CIP dealing with the intersection there, and that you can't, the ladders that are out there now, Steve, is that correct? Is that something we're gonna discuss in the CIP, right?
Yeah, it's a problem.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to know if this, that was the only thing on the list, I hope to push very hard for this list, but that $75,000 item, is that area of Bromer 38th, isn't that part of our CIP either this year or next year? Don't we have something going on there? 38th Avenue.
The, I don't believe it is, actually, it's not a funded project in the...
Or is it just work on 38th?
Work on 38th is, yes, but not on Bromer.
All right.
Don't sit down, don't go away.
Just setting you up, Steve.
While I get you, just, it's okay.
Oh, go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, pavement index rating on Bromer, where does it fit in, I know this cuts you off, but I just wondered if you can, is it something?
I don't know.
Okay, is it something we were planning on doing anytime soon, that, I mean, you could say, no, we've looked at it?
It's not on our...
Not on our...
We only have projects projected out four years from now on pavement, and it's not in there, but...
And the pavement index is not fair, I didn't mean to hit you with that, but I just wondered if, because I was gonna ask the other question, just while we're on this list, is, I'm concerned about the, this, the 41st interchange, and I want to know what's the pavement index there, that interchange, I know it's a busy one, but I don't know if we're planning on doing that anytime soon.
So, paving on 41st at the highway is scheduled for three years out from now.
Okay, so it just would make, if this was to be done, it would make more time, it would be better planning to do it at that time than to do it now?
You know, I think we need to research what the real costs are, I don't know what the cost of the green bike lanes is on a, if we're three years out, it may be worth doing now, and then again, when we do the project, if it's not a large expense. My gut feeling is that it's not, you know, $60,000 per interchange, but I'm not sure, we need to look at that.
Sure, but that one is, that intersection is going to be redone within three years, within three years?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Steve, while we have you up there, what is on our CIP, what is scheduled for the city of bike improvements within the city besides this list here?
Besides this list?
Yes.
Well, we do have, we're looking at the bike lanes on Park Avenue, improving them through the Euclid to Skrove, where it's narrow and very rough, so we will be doing that. We are currently looking at the bike lanes on Monterey, whether we want to extend them or not and remove parking, that's a study we're kind of undertaking. I think that's about it right now.
Are they scheduled for this year, or are they...
Park Avenue is scheduled for this year, Monterey is the following year.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, Steve, if you can, yeah, please. And this has to do with safe routes.
Yes.
And there's two items on here that actually could apply to safe routes and maybe, maybe a different funding source, and one of them is, the, one of the problems of getting kids to this school over here is that the majority of the students live on the other side of the freeway, and there's a huge amount of them, and so getting those kids to ride bikes, a passage area for them that's difficult right now is, is going under the Bay Porter underpass.
That's correct.
And that is, that is part of what you're suggesting here in the $60,000, is that, is there, is there an alternative funding to the city for, through, through, through safe routes for that, and also, the Park Avenue, Highway 1, the drainage, any of those areas are safe routes things, is there, do we have, is there an alternative out there for us for funding for these?
Well, so first of all, there is the Active Transportation Grant application that should have just been submitted this week?
June 1st.
June 1st, yeah, and that includes some safe routes to school components, however, there's no guarantee that the state of California will award grants because it's an extremely competitive funding source. Other than that, there really are no, well, you're probably aware that at the federal level, there's also a lot of reduction in TIGER grants, which are another way of providing safe routes to school funding, and they're looking at how can we whittle down that, too. So, funding sources are extremely competitive at the state and federal level, so it's, it would be misleading to presume that you can just go and grab from a pot of money.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, what I'm saying is that if you really want these things done, the city has to come up with the money.
Okay, so, if we were suggested as a city or as a council to give somewhere near this amount here, this question to all of you, that, in making this a line item in our budget, is it reasonable to go back to you again and say, you guys prioritize, we have this much money to do this year, this is what we'd like done this year, and this is what we'd like next year, I'd really like to keep you on as advisory group to us, and maybe this would be a fair process for us to do it this way, so...
I would be agreeable, and I'm sure that...
That's perfectly reasonable.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
More question for Steve, sorry. It's just with regards to the, this request for annual maintenance, refreshing existing bike lanes, do we have any money allocated annually for...
Yes, in our gas tax fund, and actually, if, as we go through our presentation later night, we're, you know, we identify the green bike lanes and the improvements to Bromer as a potential CIP funding, all the rest of the sheroes and signage, we will take care of as part of our gas tax striping plans and signage plans.
Is there a ballpark in how much we allocate towards bike?
It's between $20,000 and $30,000 annually, it kind of fluctuates depending on revenue every year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Steve?
Yes, Steve, let's see, Park is 35 miles per hour, and that's not as safe as I'd like it to be for bicyclists, do you have any suggestions for that? Your repaving, can you maybe narrow it?
We're gonna widen the lanes as far as we can within, without expending a great deal of money on retaining walls, to be honest with you, so we're gonna look at maximizing the width of the travel lanes in that area, the width of the bike lanes in there.
Bike lanes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great, and then when it gets closer to Kennedy, the road narrows there, is there anything we could do there, or is that just gonna stay the same, too expensive?
We're looking at that hole from Kennedy all the way to Coronado.
Okay.
As a complete, excuse me, complete project, so...
It'd be a complete, okay, great, okay, thanks. Just one other little thing, I don't know if this is our responsibility, but going down to New Brighton, there's sort of like a little pathway there, do we have any responsibility for that?
That is on state park property.
You can't touch that because they won't allow another crossing of the rail corridor.
Okay, I just had to ask as...
Best thing you do is just leave it like it is, because people are doing it.
Okay.
Daniel?
I think if you're bringing us our portion to closure, Amelia had something she wanted to say about that Monterey.
Amelia Conlon, I'm the Director of Bike Santa Cruz County, and I appreciate all of your meeting with us over the last few months to talk about bike issues, and I wanted to bring up a timing issue, you know, we appreciate Steve Jesperg looking at the option of new bike lanes on Monterey and Kennedy, and I understand that this might be a politically sensitive time to bring that up with neighbors because there might be some parking removal required, and I would just say that the repaving of Monterey and Kennedy is the opportunity to implement those bike lanes if you do decide to move forward with that, so I would ask that the timing for that be considered, and that a public process around the new bike lanes be completed before the repaving happens next year.
Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you.
And thank you Bike Santa Cruz for participating in our process here. I'll turn it over to you, Jamie.
And thanks for bringing up the public process, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, members...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I feel like this item has already been introduced, but welcome to your second budget hearing. And this is the second in our series of budget hearings. And what we're going to do this evening is, there were a number of items that the council brought up at our first budget hearing, and asked staff to provide additional research. We've done that. Some of those details are included in your staff report. Mark is here, and he's going to kind of walk through some of the questions that were asked and some of the options that the council raised. And we've done our best to hang a cost associated with them. And then we've done, integrated the recommendations from the Finance Advisory Committee, and tried to give you a little bit of a worksheet at the end that we can kind of work from to hopefully come to this place tonight where we get clear direction about the items to include in the final budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Mayor, members of council, as Jamie mentioned, we went through and listed all the items that were brought up at the last work session. We identified just over 12 items. There's a 13th that's been added that we'll walk through today. The staff will come up and give an update and updated budget numbers for all these possibilities. One of the items that was brought up at the last work session is to update our benchmark study as it relates to our reserve level. In going through that process, looking at the June 30th, 2014 financial statements for all cities, and looking at the unrestricted general fund balance, it's one of the methods that we can use to really compare apples to apples between all the cities. You know, everyone who has unrestricted fund balance has to use it in the same way it's unrestricted. So in doing that study, the city actually moved ahead of two cities in the last three years. We went from about a 22% reserve ratio up to 27.4. Just to mention on that 3.6 million, that does not include our emergency reserve fund, which was about $700,000, nor does it include the CIP fund balance, which was about $1.2 million. I bring those up because that almost $2 million could be re-appropriated if needed, in case of an emergency or economic crisis. This shows the same data, just in a graphical format. You can see that the city's kind of in that bottom group. Scotts Valley, Sausalito, and Capitola were kind of in that by ourselves, and then there's a big jump to the top four communities, the top half, with those funding being over 50%.
I have a question on that slide before we move on. Go back one, please. The $3,600,000 does not include our contingency reserve?
It does include contingency. So in that 3.6 million, it's a little over $1 million in general fund, fund balance. That's part of the discussion today.
IT balances and...
It's 1.6 in contingency reserve.
Where we have equipment reserves in there.
And then all the internal service funds.
Insurance reserves. So that's all of our cash, basically, total.
Excluding the emergency reserve, capital improvements, and some of the special revenue.
Which is a lot of money, too.
Hold on.
You almost should have a column for that.
Right, what I'm trying to get my head around is, you know, sometimes a lot of these other numbers from other cities do include those numbers. So I want to make sure that we're really as far behind as I think we are, and I think we are. But if we add another million, million and a half in emergency reserve to this, to give us a little clearer picture, but it still wouldn't include our CIP reserves.
The trick is to have an apples-to-apples comparison to the various cities, and the CAFR is... You know, I had this exact same question of Mark when I was looking at it, because I'm like, wait a second, we have more money when I'm looking at the check register than when... And, you know, at the end of the day, he convinced me that, you know, the best number you can get is sort of this unrestricted figure, general fund balance figure that you can get out of your CAFR. It shouldn't be the metric you use to say, how much cash do we have available if we need for absolutely everything? This really is probably a better metric to use is, how are we doing compared to other cities? But it's not the end-all, be-all, and it's not... Doesn't tell the entire picture, I think.
And perhaps we just restrict more of our funds than other cities do. If other cities leave all of their reserves as unrestricted, they do look a little better.
Which is what we used to do. We used to have most of it in general fund unrestricted, and then we had a few little restricted funds over here, and then we started creating funds to put things in. So that's why I said you almost need a third column to put the other money in there, so you could just see the whole picture.
And it's not that I'm not against, you know, the recommendation to increase reserves. I just want to make sure we have a really clear picture, because certainly, even if we were to add the other million in here, we're still woefully short of all the other cities that we looked at.
I'm trying to pull up here... So I can pull up some of the reserves for the policy levels for the different cities, but I don't know whether there are contingency or emergency reserves. So we'd have to research that if you'd like.
No, we're low enough to get the message. I was just bringing up the fact that there's a little fluff in there, you know, semantics as far as restricted, how much real cash we have. And I'm with you, I look at it, I go, wait, we have more money than that.
Yeah. Easily, we have the $785,000 in emergency reserves. That could go on top of that, and brings us just under $5 million.
Correct. And one of the ones that I researched a little bit more is Carpinteria, because they kind of jumped a lot. Carpinteria has set aside numbers. So in that 5.5 million, 4 million is in an economic uncertainty fund. They have a million in contingency, and then they also have a million in emergency, which is not reflected in these numbers. So the unrestricted number based on GASP requirements is really unrestricted. So if it's assigned to capital improvement projects or emergency reserves, they can't show up in this figure. And that's a cross border.
Based on what you just said, we are truly a third of what Carpinteria is. They have the same basic rough amount of emergency reserves that are restricted, and we're still...
We have more in emergency reserves if they only have a million more.
No, no, they have a million in emergency reserves, we have barely a million. So we are... They are truly three times more prepared for economic downturn than we are.
And their budget is half the size.
Right. Big point.
Yeah.
Understood. Understood.
Now, I...
That doesn't change the kind of liabilities you would have.
I would suggest that Carpinteria... You know, I don't know all of their details, but they appear to have maybe a higher reserve level, I would suggest. But they may have specific conditions or experiences that warrant it.
You kind of have to know what's going on in the cities. I mean, Carmel might have a huge legal fund that they have set aside, and other cities... You know, you have to kind of know those things about the cities to see what's going on, what they might be anticipating spending money for. So each one has its own story.
They do, and it's interesting to compare these numbers back to... Because remember, we did the same thing back in 2011, when we originally did the study. And the noticeable thing to me was Scotts Valley dropped a lot, and Carmel dropped a lot. Both of those guys had... Were kind of closer to Laguna Beach or Carpinteria levels, and they used up a lot of their cash on specific, you know, specific projects, obviously.
Okay. The next section of the follow-up, we'll actually turn to the Public Works Director to go through.
We did provide a copy of the Zone 5 operating and capital improvement budget. Now, it doesn't break it down to how much they're going to spend in Capitola. They still haven't identified what they maintain in Capitola and what they don't. We continually ask them for that. But the budget documents are in your packet. Really wasn't prepared to go through them in detail if you have any questions.
No, I'd like to see a little more information from them, if we can get any more details from them about their work plan and what they have planned here, and just a map of what they're maintaining in Capitola. Just what is the description of their work plan?
We will continue to strive to get that.
I showed the drain today to some neighbors on 42nd Avenue, in the house down the street. You know, it's not connected... The storm drain is not connected to a storm drain, doesn't have an outlet from the street. It would only collect rainwater.
I'm not...
I know, we'll have to look at that.
I'm not following, but okay.
I know, well, I'll show it to you.
Okay.
To be honest with you, Zone 5 is massively underfunded.
Yes, they are.
Massively.
And they need to start now, so we should tell them.
Well, then we have to assess our residential areas.
Right.
That's the only way to do that. And is public ready for another assessment? I don't know.
Zone 5 is in a position where every time they go to try and build a project, they historically, in the Live Oak, could use the RDA to provide the most of the funding for the Zone 5 improvements. And they just... They have about $100,000 a year to put into capital projects.
Can we detach from that Zone 5? And we should ask our attorney about that. Can we detach and just go our own? I mean, it is just a headache. I mean, if we have some areas, let's just take care of them ourselves and talk to Lathgo about detaching. I know that's kind of a sticky subject, but let's think about it at least, maybe.
I think identifying the funding source is more of the concern than the process of detaching.
And they're not going to identify a funding source, probably. They haven't for years, they don't care about it, so let's just move on.
And there's no reason we can't fund...
You know, it's a bad relationship, it's not working, let's move on, find another one.
We could fund drainage improvements ourselves. I mean, they would love to partner with us on projects as best they can. You know, when they redid other parts of the city, they asked us for matching funds, and sometimes we were able to match with them, and sometimes we weren't. But that's how they fund. They don't have a large ball of money that they're playing with. Next on the list. So we'd also been asked to look at the additional sanctuary trail markers that are available. This is out of the Rail Trail Master Plan. These sanctuary trail markers were identified actually as part of the earlier study on the sanctuary trail. There's a variety of them. Obviously, we have the wave one that's shown on the lower right there, down the Espinod. Depending on what you want to do, the little markers above that wave probably are in the $500 range and on up, depending on what you're after. So I know that had been talked about. Putting some of those along Cliff Drive or along on the wharf and stuff, so those are the options if we want to pursue that.
Stephanie, what was your idea on this? Where you're thinking?
Whatever we... Let's, you know, take a look at our whole budget and see what we want to spend, you know, for it, or buy a couple of smaller items or something like that. And I was thinking, maybe we should turn this over to the Arts Commission and have them decide where to put it, since they're kind of placing art around the city, and they might have, I don't know, they might have some better ideas. Espinod Park, we're... I don't... You know, I don't... Doesn't matter, you know, I think where we put them, wherever the visibility and the usage, and they might have a better suggestion about that.
We could do that. The problem is that we cannot use something that's been manufactured for the purpose. We would have to put a call to artists out and actually choose an artist to do a sanctuary marker, which may well be within the sanctuary trail.
These were specifically identified, so they're consistent as you go through the trail. You know, if we're looking to highlight the sanctuary trail, it may not fall in the arts project guidelines.
Yeah, it falls outside of the funding for an art project, because this is their design and their manufacture.
Right. No, I was just going to ask them for a location.
Oh, locations.
Here's the piece. You decide the location, or you guys decide the piece and the location. But if you don't want to do that, that's fine.
Sure, we have a lot of locations. We can talk about that a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So ADA items in the budget. We do currently have $300,000 that are going toward Rispin-Perry ramps. The mid-year last year, we added $75,000 to the CIP. Right now, we're recommending that be earmarked for an update of the city's transition plan. And also, we have a whole series of repairs to do at Rispin-Perry Park. And then in the facilities fund, there annually is a $25,000 budget there. A lot of that has gone toward improvements at Jade Street Community Center and some sidewalk improvements, mainly curb ramps throughout the city. But so the... $25,000 is annual, and the other ones are depending on approving the CIP.
So where this year, Steve, do you see the ADA improvements with the $25,000? Is there any specific projects that...
Probably City Hall here. We have some improvements to do here that remain on our transition plan, and actually in the council chambers and the stairways. That's trying my focus is on the remaining items on our transition plan, and most of those are here at City Hall.
Would the intersection at Stockton and Espinod be part of ADA improvements? Would that be considered?
Well, that's being designed with, you know, the new ramps and all that are ADA compliant. The funding is in the CIP program, though.
It's sort of...
No additional funding's necessary.
Thank you.
Do we need any money for training, or is that covered in your budget? It shouldn't be that much money, I don't think, but for staff training?
That's not included in any of these items, and...
Shouldn't be very much money.
Yeah, I'd have to work that out with our ADA coordinator, who's actually our building official. I haven't looked into the training that's available.
So we do have, actually, if you take a look at the Community Development Department Training Budget, it's higher than usual, and a lot of that has to do with the certification process for our new building official, which does include the ADA training.
And training for all staff members, too, for all the... I think all the... Everybody in the planning department needs to have some sort of ADA training. We did it before, and it was a huge eye-opener. Council can participate if they want to, planning commissioners, but it just opens a new... Another world to them that they're not going to see unless they get out there for a couple hours and have it pointed out to some... Have it pointed out to them by somebody who has that disability and has that challenge every day. So whether we do it, you know, all day like we did last time, that might... That's probably too much. But some sort of formalized training for our employees every couple of years, a couple of hours or whatever, you know, it would be invaluable, absolutely invaluable, and I think for whoever else, I think it would be useful for.
I think 10, 12 years ago, Stephanie, we had that training where they actually brought wheelchairs out and gave every... All the council members, everyone in staff, experienced trying to go through the 41st Avenue intersection in a wheelchair.
Or the Village in a wheelchair.
Yeah. Okay. Good idea.
The pylons on Bromer and 41st, so Bowers there, excuse me for that. So we changed the intersection there. We had a concrete median there when the hotel was built. Unfortunately, that was directing trucks to have to make too sharp a turn, and they almost took out a power pole there that has a lot of wires on it. And so we went back and redesigned the intersection and put in the pylons, because if there's a truck that's having trouble making the corner, the driver's not paying close enough attention, can actually knock them down, and they pop up out, and sometimes they don't pop up, and we have to go out there and replace them. But in general, it doesn't require them. You know, we've already heard about the Bromer from 38th to 41st. This is that same area. If we do do improvements in that, I think we can look at if there's another type of island that we can put in there, something else. It's kind of... It's not an easy... We don't want to put in a hard island that causes other problems. We can't move that pole until that house that's right there gets taken down. You know, and we're dependent on the private property to redevelop that. I know there's long-term plans of the property owner there to redevelop that site, but I don't know if that's one year from now or 20 years from now. So the best we probably would do would be to go in as we're doing improvements on Bromer between 41st and 38th and putting in curb and gutter and repaving. Restriping the project is to look at it at that time, to see if we could do maybe a rolled curb. I'd probably be talking with some, you know, transportation experts on that, what kind of island. This is what they recommended, I think it works functionally. Aesthetically, it may not be perfect, though.
We kind of created our own problem there with the hotel. We should have, just, we should have actually worked that out at the time, and I think it was a poor design by both their engineers and ours, and we're stuck with it now, because you just, you can't add to the width of that highway without taking property from one side or the other.
Right, well, if we do get a hotel on the other side, they're aware that we want to widen that and improve those corners, it's just, we're waiting for them now.
Would landscaping work at all? I mean, if you had a couple of trees-
If you do landscaping, you're going to have a-
You might have to replace them.
You're going to have a curb to protect landscaping, and then you have trucks driving over it, and I mean, that's, our problem is, we want trucks, the big trucks that are coming down 41st to be able to turn right there to go up 38th, because that's where a lot of their deliveries are. We don't want them having to continue down to, into the more residential areas and trying to turn around there. We want them turning onto Bromer, and that's why we designed it.
Wow.
Josh?
I'd send to hurry up and redevelop that property to widen it, because that would be a big improvement there.
How about that sidewalk on the side of Bromer where the little cabin is, I mean, the little house is? I mean, I think there's been some issues there.
The sidewalk on Bromer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, or the lack of sidewalk, is that-
Lack of sidewalk is a better way to put it.
Yeah, that's what the bicycle committee was talking about.
Okay.
It was improvements between 41st and 38th, and that, where there isn't no sidewalk, and there's no curb and gutter or anything right there, and those are the improvements that they requested funding for.
So this would be on the CIP?
It is not on the CIP now, they have requested to add it, I think it makes some sense.
Because we've had some issue, I think the city's had some issues with that area, if I recall.
I think we had one claim for somebody who fell in the dirt.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so, it'd be nice to do something about it.
Steve, they had an estimate on their, on the bike thing, 75,000, is that an accurate estimate? Did you-
I worked with Daniel on that, I think it's pretty accurate, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Espinod sidewalk cleaning, so we were requested to kind of come up with an improved sidewalk cleaning schedule for the Espinod. We currently spend $9,000 a year for three cleanings. Sometimes we augment a fourth, or we'll go clean a certain area. I think we did an extra cleaning in front of the restaurants late this spring, and so we're asking for an additional $15,000. We have been working with the BIA to come up with an augmented schedule that basically would clean in front of the restaurants along the Espinod every, once a month, from May through September, and then would add a village-wide cleaning in February, March, depending on the weather, and also would include extra cleanings in front of Suzie's Ice Cream and in front of Quality Market. So we estimate that additional, we haven't gotten hard prices yet at $15,000. So this would be a one-year pilot program, as I understand it was proposed, and then we would approach the BIA to help cost share. So those are the costs to kind of do the extra cleaning at this point.
Mike? Just, I know it's a rough estimate, but three cleanings for 9,000, how many cleanings do we get for 24? I know you sort of alluded to do it.
We get another full cleaning, and then we get four more cleanings just in front of the restaurants, and three more cleanings at the other two key areas, which is in front of Quality Market and in front of Suzie's Ice Cream.
And then we get four overall cleanings.
Right, yes.
All right, thank you.
Good.
Does the BIA contribute any money towards sidewalk cleaning currently?
The BIA contributes $3,000 annually to the Public Works budget. Is it earmarked directly for this? No, but that's their contribution to the Public Works budget for all the work we do in the village.
For the maximum, you could say they do one cleaning, at a maximum.
Yes.
Josh?
I just want to understand the issue of drainage on the sidewalk in front of the restaurants on the Espinod, because I know that restricts the ability of an individual owner to do cleaning.
So, we're not allowed to, individuals are not allowed to, not based on water conservation, but on stormwater requirements, you're not allowed to wash and discharge polluted water to the stormway. In front of the Espinod, those storm drains are actually connected to the sanitary sewer. We did that, I don't know, five or six years ago, so that all the flows that occurred during the summer are not discharged to the creek, but are discharged in the sanitary sewer. During the winter, it gets reversed, and they do go out to the creek. So, in those areas only, cleaning the sidewalk just on a stormwater issue is okay, I don't know about the water conservation efforts. When we steam clean, though, we are reusing recycled water, and they also have a vacuum, so they're actually sucking up the water, and they reclaim 50% of the water that they use. So they're preventing water from being discharged into any storm sewer, sewers they go through there. Next. So the 200 parks, bathrooms at Monterey Park, we were asked to come up with a cost estimate construction. This is based on a prefab building being brought in and put on a foundation, $250,000. On top of that, we'll have water service, probably, I don't think they'll let us feed off of our irrigation meter, so it would be a new meter that would be required, water meter for the site, plus some design work, which would be minimal if we use a prefab. So the total would be very close to $300,000.
Where would the location be?
I think the logical spot, I mean, we certainly haven't decided that, but it would probably be behind the backstops there in that one area.
Where the water fountain is, okay.
Although, you know, we haven't talked about that at all, and I haven't done a detailed study of it.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Wharf bathrooms, so this summer, I was mistaken at the last meeting, they hadn't done it yet, but I believe they have painted them since we last met. They were out painting as soon as they got the creek closed this year. So they've painted and cleaned the inside of the restaurants, they're putting in new paneling, and we're looking to add additional lighting and ventilation. This fall, we plan to remove everything in there, down to the sheet rock, one bathroom at a time, and rebuild them after that. So, that's kind of a, Public Works is going to do it, is going to do the work, and-
Didn't it include fixtures, too?
It will include new fixtures, not for this year, we just painted and cleaned, but when we take it out, there's some ADA issues that we still need to work out there anyway, so it's going to be a major, tear it down to the studs and rebuild it.
Can't put new sinks and toilets in this year?
We could, let me look into that, see if that's a possibility.
I think it would make it look a lot nicer, I mean, that's part of the problem out there, it's just, the fixtures are so old and tacky.
Okay, I'll be looking into that.
Is that funded already, Steve?
Designer's touch or something.
We're, as we're doing it, Public Works time, so the time's already paid for, and the materials, we can handle the materials within our Public Works budget.
Okay. There's discussion, long-term, to actually redo that outer building at some point, and actually move the bathrooms out of the facility, so you actually would have a restaurant that looks around the three ways, which makes sense, it's the best view, the bathroom has the best view on the wharf. So, maybe we should put windows in the bathroom, then. No.
That is an unfunded-
The point is to put, to put money into it right now, when we're discussing the possibility of redoing that building, doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Until you take guests out there, and you take guests out there, and they've had a nice meal and a nice stay, and they go into the bathrooms, and they're really tacky. So that's just why I think, just new fixtures, I think would just, it would make it, it would be a nice improvement, I think, that, until we do something else.
Okay, we are trying to keep it in reasonable, and there is an unfunded project for those, a new bathroom building out there, but it's, I think it's similar to Monterey Park one, probably about $300,000 project out there.
Yeah, difficulty with infrastructure, too.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but it's, it's near, the building, Willie's got a real problem with the roof, the roof and the roof deck now.
Right.
And so, I think probably in this next year, will be discussion ours on what to do with that. Okay, thank you.
Who owns the building?
We do.
You own the building itself?
Yeah.
We bought it. That's another long, interesting story.
We've got everything that owns, that's on there is ours.
Everything old we own, whether we own it or not.
Everything tacky, okay.
Village drainage, so, you know, as we're all aware, we have several low spots in the village, probably the most pronounced, because we hear about it the most, is Capitol Avenue at California Street. So last year, the city installed a new drain inlet to keep it from, had an open throat, so it doesn't blind off with leaves, and we repaired downstreet pipes for about $7,500. It still rains hard enough, that's not enough. I would recommend we kind of look at all three areas at once, and do an assessment of what we need to do from a drainage standpoint within the village. We have very similar flooding at Monterey and Longway, but the people at El Toro Bravo become experts at sandbagging their door every time it rains, so they keep the water out. And we also have a problem by the Rainbow City, where it floods there, it doesn't get into buildings there, but we do end up with a large puddle there, almost those three spots at the same time. We could look at one site if we want, you know, cut the, maybe we say it's $10,000 a site to look at, it's probably not quite that simple, but I think we, it might be worthwhile to look at how we're going to deal with the drainage, because as we all know, the village is essentially at sea level, getting it out through the beach, that actually has to drain into the, under the seawall of the beach, and then bubble up over into a box, and the one in Vice actually drains into the creeks, on the creek's side, the outfall's below the creek. So, we're probably looking at pump stations or other things, but I think we need to understand, putting in just a bigger pipe in the exact same location isn't going to solve our problems.
Just some nasty problems, Steve? I mean, to remedy it?
It's expensive, yeah. I think what, on Longway, at both on San Jose and on Monterey, we may be able to modify the pump stations there, put in much bigger pumps that are there now, and direct all the drainage there, rather than depending on, but then we're dependent on power. If we have a power outage, we're really going to be in trouble. The one on Vice, yeah, I think we're going to need a new pump station, to be honest with you, which is expensive.
You know, Vice went under three times this winter, and, you know, we talked to the owners there, and they, our building official went out and met with her, and gave her some ideas about options, because, you know, the biggest thing is keeping the water out of the building, and, you know, he was talking about some mechanisms, but they can basically sort of waterproof the front of the building, and maybe put like storm door in the front, so it'll just keep the water out when it's going to storm. So, you know, in the near term, that's probably a more realistic option, in the long term, you know, pump station, but that's a, that's a pretty big project for the city to take on.
And I would add that, I don't think it's a new problem there.
It's never not flooded.
Yeah, I think it's always flooded, and when it was a laundromat, they didn't worry about it.
They thought about raising their building?
It's on a low line.
What's the cost of a pump station? How expensive are we talking about for, to-
Cheaper to raise the building.
Yeah, a lot cheaper.
Depending on the size, probably 100 to 300,000 dollars.
Okay, just wanted to ballpark.
I think the Longway was 250, but I think that's bigger than what you would need.
Waterproof doors, a lot less.
So when we, we have new construction in the village, we require now, and Daniel's not here, it was part of his thing, but we require that, that storm doors be fitted to the outside of the building, the lighthouse building is that way, has storm doors, you pull out to fit over your, with gaskets that fit over your doors. Whether it works when it's, how deep it is, it's another question, but, but maybe that's it, that's a more economical answer for them.
I certainly think it's something they can do pretty quickly, as opposed to putting in all-new storm drains.
Yeah.
It's going to be expensive and time-consuming.
Okay.
So there's a number of other items that were identified at the last meeting, the conversation a little bit about Zeldas and the condition out there, I sent staff out to talk with them, they have a number of issues, both with their planning permits, stormwater compliance, as well as with our trash ordinance, and so, our staff met with them, and also brought in their old manager, Ed, who I think many of you know, he hasn't been working, he saw the condition, he immediately identified the problem. They agreed to make some significant improvements, fix up the trash enclosure, clean, clean, clean those sidewalks, get them clean, and also to look for different ways to get the trash moved back and forth. Part of the problem, I think, was that they spent a year, apparently, dragging back and forth their trash cart with stuck wheels, so half of what you see there is rubber, unfortunately. If they don't, if they don't comply with this, obviously, between stormwater planning and trash, we have a lot of levers to pull, and we indicated to them that they would be subject to a code enforcement action if they didn't deal with it on their own. I believe they will, I'm hopeful that they will.
I've got just a couple of comments on that, is that, I remember the day when that trash enclosure wasn't there, and before Zelda owned that deck, and that was just an open space, public open space, that whole thing, then they purchased that lot, and they put the improvements in, and redid the deck and what it is, and obviously, the deck looks nice. The problem is, is that in the village, there is no communal type of garbage area that's, that works well, there's no place to take it. I know there's one next to El Toro Bravo that a number of them use, but, well, the solution is not redoing that shed there, the solution is just taking it out and put something that's more contained in there, because a cheap fix on this thing doesn't solve the problem. As long as you're going to pull those trash barrels out of the way they're doing it now, it's going to, it is the biggest problem on the Espinod. It also, it's also, it's become more than that, it's multi-use now, it's also a weight station in the backside of it. There's a number of things that it's being used for, but there was a day that, and I'm not questioning whether it was done with a permit on it, the fact is that it's there, and there is no other place for, for Zeldas and for the Pyrodis, what's the name of the place?
Mr. Cabal.
Mr. Cabal's place, both of them use that as their trash, and they, they don't have a lot of alternative. The point is, is that it was poorly designed, it isn't made to do what it's supposed to do, and it's a public eyesore. And if we're not hardline on this thing, I don't, I don't see them really getting to a point where they're going to, going to do something about it. It really, thing really needs to be removed and rebuilt, and designed to control the drainage that's in there now, so.
And you know, when we looked at this before, we, we looked at the property across the street, there was a little land there in the Capitol Hotel when they went in, little corner there, a little, but nobody wants somebody else's garbage on their property. But that is the key, that is the key, is just planning, the recycling and the trash pickups in the village so that it's clean, and we kind of dropped the ball there and kind of have this mess, it'd be wonderful to fix it, wonderful to try to be able to do something to clean that up and deal with it, because it is, it's an awkward place, and, and the neighbors weren't getting along with each other then, because we just said, hey, you know, put it across the street, you know, rent from him, rent some space over there, we'll build a nice enclosure over there, get it off the main drag, you know, in that parking lot, you have to carry it across the street, but that's where it belongs. And so I don't know whether that, any kind of deals could be made now with, with Mr. Dwar, he said, of putting anything over on his property, but he's got a little room there.
Well, this was on Lisa's to-do list, didn't get done. I think she spent the last 12 years trying to work on this. I do think that there's obviously better solutions, you know, the best solution, frankly, is, is putting it underground, it's what they do in other urban places around the world. We haven't been able to find out whether that's even an option, if it's done anywhere in California. If it's not done in San Francisco, I think it'd be pretty unlikely we'd have the option to do it here. We're trying to research some of those options, to think outside the box, because frankly, the land value there, it's high-value land, and using it for trash storage is pretty obnoxious. So, we're going to keep pushing on it, unfortunately, the status quo is, you know, what, what we have today, and we'll keep pushing on the, on the code compliance issues, but getting somebody else to take their trash is going to be a challenge, I think.
Thank you.
So I think the last meeting, the chief went through this pretty quickly, the question about emergency preparedness came up, and chief identified that we'll be updating our emergency preparedness plan this year, and also be conducting a tabletop exercise. Tabletop exercises for council members who are maybe new, we do them every couple of years, and they're basically disaster planning, you know, usually somebody starts, comes in and starts with a scenario, and continues to develop the scenario during the course of the day, and staff gets to experience it as if some disaster was befalling the city, and go through the actions and the steps, and realize maybe where the lapses are, you know, maybe you need the superintendent's phone number, and computers are down, right? How do you get the superintendent's phone number if the computers are down? So you, it identifies potential weaknesses you have in your system, so you can fix them before, before you really need them. The library's 16th birthday, this came up at the last meeting, it sounds like the, the basic idea behind it can be accommodated within the budget, if we're talking about basic supplies, that certainly can be done, and we can coordinate it with the, with the library staff, if Councilmember Harland has some specific ideas for this one. And then that takes us to the CIP project, the new projects, and then the ongoing projects that are identified here, and then we'll, we'll circle back to the facts recommendations and the fund balance, and then kind of, Mark will lead us through a conversation about where we, what adjustments we want to make.
So the list here is also provided as an attachment in your staff report for the capital improvement projects. So these are the new projects and the ongoing projects that are going on, they're all in various stages of design at this point, or on hold, such as the Claire Street project due to waiting for the sanitation district. Wasn't intended to run through them all, but we have awarded contracts now and are in design on all the projects that are listed here. Like I said, the new projects are projects that receive Measure O funding, and some grant, like the Rispin Park, we had the 384,000 in grant funding for that, and the utility undergrounding has 133,000 that we had received from PG&E previously. The rest of the projects are funded with 700,000 in Measure O funds. The ongoing projects are a combination of grant funding, general fund money, and actually some fund balance from previous years.
Next. Questions for Steve?
I just have one quick question. When we did the, the parking lot, the lower parking lot next door, did we think about putting any kind of a stairway from the top going down, so the people that wanted to catch the bus down below could do that, if they saw it, knew that there was a shuttlebus going? I know everything we do has to be ADA, and that's an issue, but-
So if we put a stairway in, we have to put in a complying ramp along with it?
Next to it?
Yep.
You have to put it next to it, you can't count something that you already have, or that you're going to do somewhere else?
They have to be equivalent, and so, you can't say, you can't necessarily say go around the end for the disabled person, and then put a stairway in for the able-bodied person. So, if you have an equivalent facilitation, yes, you can do it, but we didn't feel that we did.
We talked about it, we would have had to put in an elevator.
It was 50,000 for the stairs and 400,000 for the ramp, so we, and we had to do both. That was the intent.
Thank you.
We tried. We tried.
Yeah.
Josh?
Yeah, I was just wondering about the, the Rosedale car lane.
So we're actually working quite feverishly right now with Nichols Design Group, who's our pavement management person, to try and get me some documents so that we can try and do it as a change order with the sanitary sewer project that's being built right now to get, expedite that and get it done as they're doing their, I think we can see significant cost savings in that. So we hope to have design documents enough to get a quote from them by June 15th. And if they are, they're nearing the point where they wanna pave, so it could go pretty quickly if we get a good price out of them.
Okay. One thing I always think about is though, coming off of Rosedale to Bay, oncoming traffic on the right, sometimes hard to see. Is this gonna address that? Or maybe you don't agree that's an issue, but I notice that's been a problem.
Paving project by itself wouldn't address that. If, if visibility, it would be more red curb and we can, I could certainly look at that independent of, of the paving project. One other issue we've had is people turning off of Bay onto Rosedale and putting an island in the middle there. We've looked at that. Right now, we're, I'm focusing on trying to get it paved and we could look at that at another date.
Just the paving?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if you could look at that intersection, thanks.
Okay.
I have another, another quick question. The, the work that's being done in Riverview Terrace Avenue area right now with PG&E work?
Right.
They're gonna overlay the street?
They are not.
We're gonna overlay the street?
Well, we will, as part of our CIP, come back and, and address those. Basically, PG&E has gotten rulings from the state that, you know, we can't, they only have to return it to the condition it started, which is this point, patching their trenches and, and backfilling the trenches to our requirements and putting in a, in a trench cap. They, we can't even get a slurry seal out of them.
Wow, because that's a lot of work tearing up our street.
Usually the sanitation districts, local agencies, we do get them to agree to do a slurry seal. But PG&E, we haven't been successful with that.
Thank you.
Speaking of slurry, is, is slurry part of the capital program? Is there any in this year's budget?
There is no slurry in, in this year's capital improvement. I think it's actually two years out before we do another slurry seal project in Jewel Box.
That's the next, Jewel Box?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But shouldn't we do Riverview sooner since, since that just got torn up?
Just got done too.
I know, I know.
It was just slurry sealed. Um, you know, I'd like to say we knew this was coming, but PG&E contacted me about six months ago. So, you know, we could expedite it. We already have programmed, project programmed out for the next three years already in our pavement management program. If you want me to move that back up again and, and look at those costs, I could do that.
Yeah, what a shame for that neighborhood to have gotten, that, you know, finally gotten that slurry seal, which I know they'd all, they'd all been thrilled about it, but it's, you know, it's a pretty good job. But, but.
Are you sure you wanna talk about this?
Yes, because they, yeah, because I hate to see those streets torn up again. And without having a slurry seal put on, even a bad job of a slurry seal. Because that, I mean, it, it did improve it a whole lot. So maybe we should think about that or doing part of that neighborhood this year rather than wait three years to do it again? I mean, that's just, I don't know. I mean, usually we do something, we do it right and we move on. We don't, you know, do something and it gets torn up and then we gotta wait a couple of years to, you know, do it again. Um, you know, I like to finish what we start in a timely, timely manner.
Thoughts from the audience?
Just can't talk about it.
We should wait and see what, I think we should wait and see what the patch job looks like before we start planning ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
I could get the price to, to a slurry seal in there and come back to you with that if you want.
Steve, I hate to add anything to Public Works immediate billings, but that, that sidewalk that comes down Capitola Avenue, where it hits Hill Street there, where we, you can walk all the way from Soquel Drive and downtown Soquel on a sidewalk all the way, come all the way over the freeway and walk down and in Capitola at Hill Street there, you can't get past that area. You gotta go out in the street.
So the Hill Street pedestrian improvements there?
Which one is it?
The Hill Street pedestrian improvements on the bottom list. We're actually including that, filling in that gap of sidewalk in that project.
Okay.
And that's in design right now.
So that, is that a this year project?
Yes.
It is. Okay. Is it, is it being engineered now?
It's being engineered right now.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Steve, look, this is a beautiful list of projects. And it's all some of our favorites all, all around.
Yeah.
What are the odds?
Don't ask.
No, I mean, you are, you do a brilliant job. This quantity of projects, I don't think can be completed by the department that we've given you.
So, we are making changes. There's recommended changes in our Public Works makeup to.
That's who I wanted to hear, yeah.
Take some of the, the load off myself. And we've hired two good engineers in the last six months. Not consulting engineering firms that are really stepping up and one's taking over the pavement management program. And I'm hopeful that they, and they, they will move forward. They're the ones expediting the Rosedale project for me. And the other firm is doing, you know, doing the Rissman ADA right now and the rail trail that we have connection there, the roundabout. And they're moving very quickly. I think those two changes will help. It is an aggressive and, and obviously if we've had trouble with project delivery as a whole, but I think we're, we're trying to make improvements in that regard.
How about project management once the project is let and in process?
Depending on, on the complexity of the project. We've, we've hired project managers. Smaller projects, I think we can continue to do in-house. Really hasn't, project management during construction hasn't been our biggest issue. It's mainly getting them out to bid.
But, thank you. That was a left-handed way of trying to get your help around the block.
Thank you, Steve.
Can we have just a quick discussion about the roundabout? Because that's gonna be, people are kinda confused about it. They're not sure whether we're doing it or we're not, or we're looking at it, or we like it or we don't. And I, we don't know until, till we get, till we get it to take a look at it.
We're designing it.
We're designing it.
Right, right.
We're, we're coming up with a, with a final design. We had a very preliminary design, more of a graphic than anything else. We are designing it right now. And then we will be holding, putting up some information and holding some workshops on it. We're not committed to it yet. I think we need intersection improvements there. And I think personally, I think the roundabout makes more sense than anything else we could do there. But we need to go through a public process and we're aware of that. But I wanna have a design that we know will work before we move forward with that.
And we need to, to notify more than just the 300 yards or 500 yards or whatever it is. Big notice, because it's gonna be of, of interest to lots of people.
Correct.
Thank you, Steve.
I think I have a couple more slides, actually.
That, that's actually the end.
Oh.
Yay.
Then I'll leave, thank you.
You wanna talk to us some more, then you can stay up there.
So we've already seen the, the financial committee recommendations, so.
You, Mark?
So just go back, what we talked about last meeting, some changes that we're proposing, no impact to the general fund. We have offsets, revenue offsets in there for changes from the proposed budget that was provided to what, what should be adopted. That includes the additional police officer. We project an annual cost of about 130,000. Well, the funding is a reduction in the IT transfer, is along with a reduction in the community service officer position. We also are gonna increase the community grant to correct, to correct an entry problem. That's about six, little over 6,000, once again reduced from the IT transfer. There's a city school project in the CIP. It's an escrow account that's been sitting there for 40,000. So we'll, we'll budget the, the revenue as well as the expenditure for the project, as well as 8,000 in speed signs coming out of the gas tax fund.
Yes.
The next slide's kinda get us to the fund balance discussion. Taking the, the staff recommendation along with the, with the Finance Advisory Commission. The bold one are the Finance Advisory Commission for 300,000 and then the PERS contingency fund. They recommended 200,000 to the CIP. The staff is recommending that that 200,000 goes to Rissman Park, tennis court reconstruction, as well as village sidewalk replacement. And then as through the discussion today, in the last meeting, we came up with some of the costs for other capital improvement projects for discussion tonight. The 100,000 in facility fund transfer, which leaves a balance in the general fund of about 334,000. Some of the possible uses from, from staff recommendation as well as the discussion last meeting as well as today, is the sidewalk cleaning, the plain air event, an increase to the IT transfer. And then we have that transient occupancy tax claim that, that the city receives. So we, we'd like to set aside some money in case the city has to pay, pay a refund.
Can you go back a slide? Just for a second.
Isn't the tennis court money coming from Monti? Or is this additional 50,000?
Yes, but it's an additional out. And in addition, we've also, we're applying for, I'll let the Public Works.
Is it about 100,000 worth of tennis court work?
It is.
Okay.
They need to be reconstructed.
Yeah.
And it's about 100,000. We anticipate 40 from Monti, 50 here, and we're hoping 10 from USTA.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
The, the pump house area reconstruction, Steve, explain that.
Stockton, isn't it?
Every year for the Begonia Festival, we get in there and shore up the pump house. And so the three judges can stand up there. And there's also an ADA, you know, we don't really have ADA access down to the river at that location. So it'd be to tear out that pump house, rebuild it and put in some ADA.
Is there really a pump house?
There's really a pump down there, yeah.
I remember they used, they used to pump water out of it.
Yeah, well, it's a pump house. It's for, it was built as a fire protection. They pump water out of the creek for fire protection. That's one of, actually one of our water rights. But um, the pumps, doesn't work anymore, obviously. And, and the building's falling down. So we need to do something. I just, you know, it's been kind of on our list for a while. There's other projects on our CIP that are unfunded, but I think getting that one taken care of in the near future. I will say, if we, on that list, 135,000 comes from the recommendations from the bike groups. Like I had mentioned before, 15,000 that work we will do with gas tax funds already. So the others, the 75,000 from 41st, on Roamer from 41st to 38th. And then the highlighted bike lanes at the over crossings. So that's where that 135, I think we have some suggestions if we wanna move money around it later.
So is, Steve, is, is all the property below the pump station, past Hubick's house there, is that all public property there?
Yeah, that's, there's actually a city-owned parcel.
And that, and that ends where? Which house does that end on?
It ends where the hedge. I don't know the property owner name, but right now, you go down there and there's a, a wide area where all the floats get in and out. And then there's a hedge. And somewhere near that hedge is where the property line is. So we own from the hedge to the bridge.
Kind of where the fish sign is.
The hedge, the hedge to the bridge. So, so, so the sidewalk, the stepping sidewalk that goes down besides the winery is on private property?
Yes. The stairway is, is in the Hubick property.
I know there's concern about people that live along that corridor. Not that, we, we probably made that public, public use areas, but to actually advertise it or promote it and encourage people to go down there that come to town.
So from the.
It's not, it's not advisable.
Stockton Avenue, excuse me, I'm sorry.
With, with them anyway.
Yeah.
So the idea would be that if we were making an ADA access down there, are we encouraging people to come out of the village and go down to that pathway?
We might be.
Complying, complying.
Yeah. There is a pathway there. There's a route, a route, a route of travel already there. So I think in some regards, we are. And there is a, a recorded easement from Stockton Avenue Bridge to the trestle for pedestrian way there.
Yes.
Above the, above the trestle, there isn't, but.
Big supporter of that. My point is, is that, is that their, their argument was, is that even the BIA was putting a brochure out encouraging people to walk down there when they came and visited. It becomes, becomes one thing for a public use by people who live here as to a public use by anyone who comes to town. And so, somewhere there needs to be some separation.
I think we could look at that. But you know, we have a festival that's hosted that basically requires frontage along that creek. And we don't have ADA accessibility to it. So I think that's a, an issue unless we wanna make changes in the way those festivals are run.
Steve. Good clarification. I was gonna ask Rich, is there, wasn't the general plan, wasn't there something where we were supposed to increase access to the creek? Was that, I hit put down spot, but um, that was one of our visions.
To the best of my recollection, we did have a policy to maintain access, public access along the creek and up by Prospect and, and some of those other places.
I remember it came up and it was, it was put in. It's like, you know, that was it. And we do have the festival there. And it's my contention, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but anytime we do something, ADA is the new standard for, for can provide a path or stairway. That's, it's gonna have to have that as, as a component.
Yeah, yeah. Anytime we do improvements, crosswalks to buildings or anything else, they need to be in compliance.
I don't think we're trying to encourage it, Dennis. I think it's just protecting ourselves from liability by, by, you know, because the path that's there is obviously a hazard.
Well, the, the issue, the issue is not that it's been a public pathway there. It's increased tourist industry. The BIA actually put a brochure out encouraging people to walk down there. That's, that's the same as asking, encouraging people to walk up on Depot Hill to go along, along Gold Grand Avenue. There's a point, there's a point where that industry should, you know, should have its limitations on where it goes in the public areas, you know.
Certainly, I, you know, I haven't, we haven't gotten there with this project. We've identified it as a need. But if we do any improvements there, that would need to be.
One question for you, Steve. The pump house reconstruction, how much of that is the pump house itself and how much of that is the ADA portion? Because the pump house, it does, I mean, it seems like that the Begonia Festival could have other options. I think the announcers sit up there and the announcers, they may be expendable in certain situations.
I'd say. A third of it's the pump house and two thirds of it's probably ramping.
Okay, so about, just about 100,000 to the ramping and then the pump house itself? Whether, that could be an independent decision, whether or not, you know, you could build up with an annual stage up there or something else?
Scaffolding.
Scaffolding, yeah.
I wonder how much rainfall we get.
I have a question, Steve. First time I heard about the deed of public access. So can you explain, you know, how wide that is and the stairway near the winery? Does that fall within that access?
No, the stairway is on the winery's property.
Okay.
And part of their own access. I don't know the width. I just know that on the parcel map, there is a pedestrian walkway that's shown through the properties from Stockton Avenue Bridge to the trestle. It ends at the trestle.
So it starts on public property that the city owns and then continues?
I'd have to get some more details on it. It's been a while since I looked at it.
Okay. I was just wondering. Okay, thanks.
That property actually came into being, I think, in the 52 flood. Because all of those houses didn't have front yards and that was just ripening vegetation along there. And then they put the, they put the, the bulkhead in, created the flat area and all of a sudden became, and I think the property lines actually go in and out. Some of them still go to the middle of creek. Some of them are back on the right side of the pathway. They're all over the map.
It's all over the place.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So that takes us to the conclusion of our presentation. We've put together a little bit of a spreadsheet here for you, talk, showing the projected general fund balance, the recommendations from the Finance Advisory Committee, includes the 300,000 to the PERS contingency fund, and then an additional allocation, well, you can imagine there, about 200,000 that staff would recommend into the Rissman Park project and tennis court reconstruction and the village sidewalk replacements. Then we've listed out some other projects as well. And if the council would like, you know, we can present options of, you know, things we could talk about defunding if, if there's a desire to put, put more funding into some of these other projects. So I think that concludes our, our presentation. We're available for questions as we move forward.
And Ed has a list too, to talk to us about.
I think we covered the list.
Yeah, let's go through your list.
Let me go through the list?
Yeah, I like it.
Okay. Do you mind?
Sure, go ahead, Ed.
Well, we start with, with the, we got a copy of this. I didn't, I apologize for my IT budget, so everybody doesn't have a copy. Didn't mean to exclude the Community Development Director, the City Attorney and the Police Chief, but I think you're exempt. I think we talked about the Espinon sidewalks. And, and I just wanna make it clear that this is a pilot program to see if we can actually get the sidewalks through some kind of system to a point where they're clean. The intent is not for us to bear the burden of this program in perpetuity. So, and I made it clear to the BIA that this was a partnership. And it seems now like this, you know, I estimated a cost of 20,000. And our cost now is 24,000 for the entire additional 15, additional 15. The entire program would be now 24. And it would be my vision to, in some kind of partnership, that it would be a two thirds, one third recommendation I would make to them where we would do 16,000, they would do eight. And currently, they put in three. So it would mean, they would have to come up with an additional 5,000. It's just ballpark talking, but the, the goal here is, we've talked and we've talked about cleaning the sidewalks. And this is the most aggressive plan, Steve, that we've ever had for cleaning the sidewalks? Yeah. So, and like I said, the picture on the, on the cover here is, it brings in the garbage. And I, you know, I think we're all scratching our head. And I'm glad to see that you're looking underground, above ground, in the air, anywhere, you know, because I don't know how we solve that problem, but it's gonna be a challenge. Second, I got, and Steve, I don't, I hate to put, I got that curb. Second, I got, and Steve, I don't, I hate to put, I got that curb on Kennedy. I don't know what the estimate on that is. I just see it as a liability and I don't know if we have gas tax or any other fund to fix that.
So actually, there's a paving project for Kennedy in Monterey, not this fall, but next spring. That's in design right now. And as part of that, we were planning on taking care of that. So it's already in that budget, but it is probably six to eight months out if we want to do a temporary repair. It's been that way. There's anybody, you know, there's no sidewalk in there. The sidewalk in there is further up into that condominium complex. So if council would like me to take care of it, we could do it out of the gas tax.
Probably a fix-it would be a really good thing to have to do there.
Estimate? I mean, any ideas by individual? Less than ten thousand dollars?
Less than ten thousand dollars.
Okay. I hate to go into the gas tax fund because we can access that for so many things, but is it a fund that has surplus money in it?
I would call it surplus. Typically, we have.
Apologize for that word. Okay.
We do road patching, refreshing, striping, and legends out of the gas tax. And then we pay for all of our streetlights and traffic signal maintenance out there. So it's kind of, we don't identify the street improvements we do. We tend to use it to catch what we can on there. So from that standpoint, I don't believe there's money currently. It'd be in next year's, so July first, before we could get to it.
That would be fine. I look at this and I think it's something we should act on. I think it's an embarrassment to have something like that. And the fact that it's been six to eight years like that means that we can put things off forever. The reason I put it in this brochure was I think we should act on at least fixing that sidewalk. And what we do now is just something we don't have to do later. So, and it is a small job.
It's a tripping hazard, that's what I see. And tripping hazards, I agree with you. You know, if we can do it pretty cheap and easy, it'd be great to do it.
I'd like to see that. The third one I have is this Vice Salon. And it looks like you've got, the way I read this, there's twenty-five thousand dollars. This is going to be an engineer that's going to come in and assess all three of those boxes. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and I don't think we've identified funding for it yet.
There is no funding for that. And I see.
As it sits here today, it hasn't not been funded.
Right. I see that you've identified it as the twenty-five to thirty-five. I don't know if I put, I put an estimate of five thousand, which is obviously low. It's more like probably ten thousand per location is more accurate.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's just something I, you know, I'd like to see us, I'd like to at least see us identify what our problem is and how we choose to remedy it down the road. That's a different ballgame. But until we know what it is, it might be a simpler fix than what we think. And most likely, it may be a big fix, what you just mentioned. The bathroom in Monterey Park, seems like these bathrooms keep going up. We tried to put a bathroom in each parking lot. It was a hundred and fifty. Now it's two fifty. And but it's a permanent fixture. I mean, I'm still in favor of this. I think it's been long overdue for this park. I see myself in a tug-of-war with the Finance Committee because they are doing their due diligence to have us put away money. But I still think part of our job or responsibility as a city is to provide services and functions. And the fact that all these people are playing soccer and baseball and everything else, and we know where they're going to the bathroom. And I believe I've been confirmed that there are no documents that say that we can, do not have to put a bathroom. Are we, we're prohibited from putting a bathroom in the park.
We can't put, we can't put portables. We never really talked about it seriously.
We have brought in portables in the past, on occasion.
Portables, and that'd be a good temporary.
I wouldn't be in favor of portable. I mean, this is something where we make an improvement to the city. That's how I'm looking at this. And I'd be willing to start funding that if we can. And the last one is just a simple, I don't know if this is a, how expensive this is, how this works, is this unprotected intersection on Depot Hill. And the reason I bring it up is there's twelve intersections up there, and every one of them has protected stop signs except for one.
It does meet warrants for a stop sign. We've had hearings here before the council on that. So if you'd like to move forward with that, we could bring back another hearing on that matter.
We need to put that on the agenda for a hearing, is that?
Well, I'm a little leery because we did it last year and the neighbors didn't want it. And so if the neighbors have changed, let them bring it to us. Get their approval for it and bring it to us.
The neighbors have solicited me because they know I live up there. So that's why I brought it on here.
Have them write a letter to us, maybe.
What process is I need to go through?
So we've actually had several hearings on this over the last decade, I believe, on this particular stop sign?
Yes, I think it's just one.
Just one.
Two, because I brought it up last year and then you pulled out the emails from a number of years ago.
We had one hearing at the council.
So, you know, if it comes up now, our processes, if council members identify something for a future agenda, we can put it on for a future agenda. Obviously, if you can hit a brick wall, it'd be nice to know. So we don't.
This has never been on the agenda since I've been on the council. So if I need to make a motion and put it on the agenda, I'll do so now if that's appropriate this time.
We don't need a motion for it.
I mean, I'd just like to announce I'd like to put it on.
I support you.
I'm real leery of putting anything else on Steve's lap. You're adding another project that he has to deal with, so.
Steve, am I overwhelming you with a stop sign?
I think I can probably copy the last staff report.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. And that's it. All I got. Oh, no, the last, I'm sorry, one more. This got a little interest was this crosswalk at the intersection of Riverview and Capitola.
Well, that's not a problem.
I wish there was an easy solution to this one. So it's got to be ADA compliant. Right now, the cross slope across the road exceeds ADA, so we'd have to kind of regrade the road there.
Is that the problem? Is that why we haven't moved forward on this?
Well, and then we need ADA ramps at all the corners. The existing ADA ramps, I don't believe that are on this side of the street, on the police side, are ADA compliant for only one direction of path of travel. So we'd have to change. Four new ADA ramps, regrading the road, probably unfortunately about fifty thousand dollars worth of work to put in those crosswalks.
You didn't scare me with that number, okay?
Well, that's good, good. Scared me.
I say keep it on the list because it's a project.
I didn't take it off.
Yeah, no, I know.
So I've walked that intersection with one of the consultants we have now because I know that, I'd like to put a crosswalk in there. And I try to say it's got to be something simple and easy we can do and to meet all the code regs today.
I think with the fact that the restaurant's there and it's successful and the crossings there and the fact that we've got all the traffic from the beach to the additional beach parking lot, we've just increased the density of that and use of that. And people go the back way to get, you know, to sneak into the Espinaud, you know, down Riverview. So, though, you didn't scare me with the fifty thousand dollars. So I'm still lobby, I'm going to lobby for that one.
Okay, okay, good.
That's it.
So since Ed's given us a list, let's hear some comment on thoughts on any of these items.
Want to go through Ed's list? Well, in general, I think I'll just address the list up here. First of all, I think we should take care of the cleaning of the sidewalks. I don't care if it's one year or the next hundred years, but bringing it up to twenty-four thousand, whether the BIA chips in or not, I really don't care. But I do want to take this opportunity, and I will, because I care less about the people I'm slamming right now every day, I will take the opportunity now and all through the budget session to point out all the things we could do with a hundred thousand dollars and all the small-minded and bitter and just horrible people who mounted the campaign against the TOT increase. Congratulations, folks. And your poster child Carmel, who is a ten percent, just raised it. So we stand alone. Thank you very much. I'm going to do that as many times as they wrote cartoons about us, which means I have a lot of time to talk. So let's keep cleaning the sidewalks. I don't care if we have money or not, but twenty-four thousand, let's just do it, even though tourists, you know, contribute to it.
Since it's a public forum and since you added that, I just want you to know that the Venetian hotels just raised their rack rates twenty percent across the board.
Ah, pity.
So a room went from two hundred to two forty, so.
Yes.
Couldn't handle the increase, could they?
Yeah, our dollar would have stopped tourists.
No, most definitely. And continue saying things like that because I don't think there's enough time to waste talking about.
Well, you opened the door, so I couldn't resist.
And the door's remaining open. I don't think, and I'm sorry bicycle people, I like the entire list. And I think we should go forward on the whole list except for Romer and Thirty-Eighth, which we should put on next year CIP. It's a big chunk. I think the most important and most dangerous spot in this whole list is the sixty thousand freeway lanes. I go through those intersections three times a day. And for a bicyclist going across Forty-first, it is chilling. We really need to do that. We need to do it right away. The bathrooms, so sad, can't really go along with the three hundred thousand for the bathrooms right now. But it needs to be put on the horizon. I don't think it's the time to do it, especially with the PERS. And I will say that a lot, too. Drainage assessment, sure. Another consultant, why not? Did that sound sincere? I don't know. Sanctuary trail markers, sure. Bike area reconstruction, we've talked about that a long time. I'm in favor of that. Obviously, as a head of the art and cultural, I have to vote for the plein air event, even though it'll be considerably less than that, I find out today. It'll be almost revenue neutral, so.
Couldn't you put that in your existing budget? Why does it need to be a special one?
Because our existing budget is literally to the penny, and almost everything we do is revenue neutral. The only thing we really pay for is the postcards that go out and the sound engineer. That's basically our whole art and cultural budget.
Yeah, maybe you should put a couple more thousand dollars in there. So if you want to do something else next year, you just have it there. You don't have to come back.
It'd be nice. We're just trying to be team players. So I think I covered everything. That's all. Everything else I'm in favor of.
I think you are team players. I thank the Art and Cultural Commission.
Thank you.
Stephanie, would you like to go next?
Sure. I just, well, I want to comment at the end. I think the staff's done a really good job this year, and I have to congratulate all the people in the Finance Department and Planning and all the departments that worked on this. This is always such a big job to put the numbers together. And with the new Finance Director on this year, it was particularly challenging. And I think everybody's done a really good job. I see it as a, pretty much a status quo budget with a couple of little extra projects because we have a little extra money. But I support the Finance Advisory Committee's recommendation and what they've recommended. I think that's prudent. That's good. I don't like changing the name of the other fund, so I like the name that they came up with for the Pension Reserve Extra Fund is good. That's what we have to keep our eye on the ball. That's what we have to do. We have a couple of things here, and that's the elephant in the room. So I think every year, we just need to not put so much money in there that we're not taking care of services, as Ed said, but that we are prudent and it's not going to hurt us more than it's going to. So I just have to put a plug in for the community groups. I'm sorry that the council wasn't interested in giving them a cola. This is the perfect year to talk about. And we have this kind of.
We gave them a cola.
I know, I know. But in addition to that.
An additional cola.
In addition.
A cola cola.
In addition, yeah.
Pepsi cola.
They have been so long without one for so many years, and their needs are going like this. And so this would have been the time to give them another small cola. Another even percent or two would make a big difference for them. And if we can find it in our hearts to give them a little bit more, I would really like us to do that because we are giving them a little bit more, but it will mean so much in terms of their services that they provide to our residents. I'm happy about all the other things. But I still would like the Planning Commission to weigh in on CIP. I mean, they deal, they're, you know, they're the ones that deal with the rubber on the road, you know, all the time. And I value their experience and expertise. So I know, you know, Rich said they were going to let us know what their preferences were, you know, this would have been a good time, you know. So maybe if the budget's, you know, not going to be final for another couple weeks, we can still hear from them because I value their longtime experience. And they may see something that'll jump out that we'll think is, you know, would be a really good idea. So I think, I think I support all of the other recommendations that Mike's made and willing to move around on some of the other ones that other people are interested in.
Do you want to wait on the Monterey bathroom?
Yes. Yeah, we don't know what's going to go on there. Let's wait until next year. Talk about that when we know more about the use.
I'm in favor of them. I'm just worried this year, three hundred thousand here, three hundred thousand there.
Well, we don't want the use, we don't know what the use is going to be there. So we need to determine that. And then I think we can talk about that. But I think, you know, I have ambivalent feelings on bathrooms. We didn't put them there when we planned it because we wanted people to get in and out and not spend all day there. But they're ending up spending all day there. So that's what we need to talk about. And if, I'm not against portable bathrooms, you know, if that can do the trick to get us through the summer, you know, that's okay. People use them.
I don't know what to think about bathrooms, but, you know, after years of taking my daughter to soccer games at various school facilities here and over the hill, often over the hill, there'd be a key to the bathroom at the school facility. And, you know, it seems to me maybe we could work out something with the school. They do have bathrooms and obviously not during school time. Just a thought. So I would definitely like to look at that a little closer. I like the idea of pulling out the bike facilities projects, although the proposed bike lane on Monterey is going to be an issue. And I completely agree, we'll have to have a neighborhood hearing on that. Village draining, definitely. I don't know what that's going to be, but, so I'd pretty much go along with earlier things that Mike said and others. And the village draining, I definitely want. One thing about the PERS contingency fund, really glad the fact, made this recommendation. It shows the city's commitment to meeting our PERS obligations, which I think is very important to the workers here, part of our staff. Thanks. Oh, one last comment I can forget. Before we enter into an agreement with the BIA on the street cleaning, sidewalk cleaning, I'd like to spell that out. I don't want to establish a precedent that, you know, we're going to be covering the cleaning of the sidewalks in front of their businesses that in many cases they dirty. And obviously, people do, too. But I'm very concerned about that. I don't want to get a precedent going. So I'm glad you brought that up, Ed. You've done a lot of work on that. So thank you very much. But we need to work that agreement out. And if it's going to go forward, you know, I really do think it should be on their shoulders. Thank you. The comments I've received from businesses there is that it detracts from their business. And they want to have clean sidewalks. So I think we'll demonstrate that it can be done, and then we'll go on from there.
First of all, the Financial Advisory Committee's recommendations, I support that strongly. I think stronger reserves in the city gives us strength. And look at the cities that do have strength. They're well-established and they do well. The Bicycle Committee's recommendation, I agree with Mike's synopsis on that. And that gives them almost, I think it's almost eighty thousand total to work with. The connection through Romer will be important at the time that we can deal with a hotel right there and what we're going to do with that intersection. I can see that link be important in the future, but right now it just doesn't, we need to resolve that intersection corner first. As far as community groups go, you know, I'm always in favor of sharing the pie. The problem is with me is that last year, much to my discontent, we were put in a position where we did a two-year budget with them. They agreed to that, and I agreed to it. So I think we need to stay with what we're offering. It'll be another discussion next year when we come back with community groups. In contention with the sidewalk issue in the village, those are the most expensive pieces of property in the whole city for us to maintain, both for public works and for policing. The city puts an enormous amount of money into that short stretch of Espinaud that basically is the cost, should be absorbed by the cost of those restaurants that are there. We provide them with parking. They don't provide any of their parking. We take care of that for them. We maintain it. We maintain that whole area. My experience is that if you give them this, you'll never get it back. In other words, if we agree to a one-year program with them and give them this away, you're, just plan on doing it for the rest of time. I don't think, that's a gift of public money. That money should be, we have other places where that money can go. That twenty-five thousand a year, we have a hundred places that we can put that. That, I disagree that we should do it. We help them with their BIA budget. They have an obligation with us that, or a commitment, the city actually has control of their budget in ways that we can actually require them as an assessment to pay for that. And that's what we should be doing. It is those places, besides Gary Wessel, who takes care of his, our biggest problems, like Piece of My Heart and Zeldus and maybe in front of A Bar. Those three, that section there is the problem. Why should the public take care of their problem? They should not. They should not. And this is not a time to start that. We could demand before we're being asked in the next week's agenda, we're going to be asked to approve the BIA budget. At that time, all we have to do is say to them, you work out your problem. It's your problem. You work out how you keep those sidewalks clean. We're asking you to do it, or we will come in and we will assess you. And we will make you take care of it. It shouldn't be the city and the public, and the public of this community to take care of that sidewalk. It shouldn't be the city and the public, and the public of this community to take care of that sidewalk for them. So if, if we're going to go forward and we have, if we have a majority there, I would, I would strongly suggest that, that we send the message to the BIA that this is their problem and they need to take care of it. You have one year to get, to get your act together and this thing. And they've already, they've already thumbed their nose at us on this thing. So the, the way we have pressure is, is we have control of the BIA budget. We have to use that pressure. Again, these are the most expensive pieces of property in this community and we take care of it for them. The, the Monterey Park bathrooms, I agree. We, we don't need to do that right now. We can discuss that and bring it into the future a bit. We, we don't even know what we're going to do there in that park yet. The, the tennis court reconstruction, you know, that's, that's expensive number. That's a hundred thousand dollars. That's more than we put into any other recreational program in the city. And it's not the biggest recreation in the city. But we're putting a hundred thousand dollars into it and the regular maintenance, maintenance we do of the thing. Maybe we should find some, some, some alternatives to how the tennis players help start paying for this, this, this property and maintaining it.
You know, I don't think we've done it for a long time because I, I told somebody about it last week. They were so excited because they played on it for years. And it had, it's never been resurfaced in how long?
It's due. It's definitely due.
How long has it been? Has it happened in our lifetime?
More than basketball.
I think I remember once.
Okay.
So we, we restripped it and have painted it. They're actually built by the school district originally. And we've maintained them. We've restripped them. We've patched the cracks several times, but it's, they're.
Never resurfaced it.
We've never resurfaced it.
Why doesn't recreational fees require that they, that there be assessment for their, in that for, to pay for? Their fees should be higher for the uses if they're paying, if.
You know, I mean, it isn't explicitly done through the recreation fee program, but I think arguably it is. You know, the tennis program is very successful and the tennis program generates a lot of the recreation program funding. Yeah, the reason we're recommending this is that in a sense it's fifty cents on the dollar for, for the city. We have a private sector donation match as well as hopefully a USTA grant here. So, you know, when we do look at sort of the moneymakers, if you will, for the recreation program, those tennis courts have been making the city, have been helping offset the recreations costs for a long time. And I, I think it's probably time now to invest in them because they do generate a lot of money for the program.
Okay. You know, I'm not denying that it needs use and I, I think it's a public service that we offer. That's a good thing. I just think there needs to be a way to pay for this type of improvements over the long term for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you're touching on a, a key issue across the board, whether it's the tennis courts or the community center, this facility, uh, courtyard. I mean, frankly, you know, the wharf. We own a lot of stuff and it's been difficult for us to take care of it over time. You know, one, one of the steps in that direction has been the facilities fund to try to be able to reinvest in these. I, I get it. I just think that between the combination of how long it's been with the tennis courts, the amount of use that they get and the potential liability associated with them, coupled with the private sector funding, I, I think it's a good project to probably tackle quickly. And I do understand completely. It's a lot of money to spend on recreation.
Just a little question about that. You know, is this open to enough people to warrant the money? I mean, we have tennis lessons there. I, I don't go out there to follow what's going on there. So if you could give me an idea of like, do people do pickup games? I mean, like I did for basketball. I mean, how's it work? I mean, is it available? We're putting a lot of money into this. So do a lot of people really have access to that besides the ones that do tennis lessons?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it has lights, so they use it at night too.
This is a big deal, okay? The, the tennis is used widely and, and part of our, our core is to deliver services to our citizens. And I gotta go back on the city manager's line here. This is funded, this is a grant. This is like somebody's giving us free money to do this. And, and what I like about it is, is we do have a lot of facilities. And what we're finally doing is we're not patching it. We're not banding it. We're going to fix it so it's right. And, and I don't know what the longevity of this patch is, but this is definitely used by a lot of people. Okay? I mean, you know, we, 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 we think that we're all just a surf town and we do a skateboard town and all that stuff. No, there's a lot of people who play tennis. If you drive by those courts, they're, they're used almost all the time. So I'm totally in favor of this, okay? This, this, this is, the fact that Monty gave us fifty thousand, it's a win-win for us, so.
It's expensive, but it only looks expensive because we've never done it before. We've never, we've never resurfaced.
And we checked the box. We're done with it, Dennis. We can move on to some other project.
Okay. I'm thinking from the private spectrum. If you, you joined a gym or, or something like that, you pay for the facilities that you.
Sure, but you know, part.
Lifeguards don't, the beach doesn't pay for those.
I know. There's a hundred things we do. I, I don't, I'm not denying that. But, but there should be some, some mechanism long-term to take care of these tennis courts. And somewhere there has to be a funding mechanism for that. And certainly the people who use it should have, should be involved in that in some way.
They buy things and pay taxes in Capitola. They go shopping.
Indirectly. I agree with Stephanie. I think it's an indirect thing. And I, and like I said, if, if this bill to fix this was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's who we're looking at. But the fact that we're, we're, I mean, it seems like fifty thousand's a lot, but when you look at what we're getting, it's a big bang for the buck. And that's why I'm, I'm a big supporter of it.
I'm not denying that. I'm fine with that. Okay. The, um, the pump house area, whatever Steve thinks we need to do with that. I mean, um, having ADA access down there is probably more important. We can always do scaffolding there to make a stand for, for that. If, if the pump needs to be enclosed, then.
So, so what you've seen over there, can you scroll up to the top of the spreadsheet? You know, we, we tried to take what we were hearing from the council members and move over into the proposal column, if you will, kind of our fund balance we're playing with and then what we have to allocate. So right now I haven't, we haven't heard another council member talk about that specific project at this time. So.
I spoke about the pump house being something we should do. Because of the ADA access, more than the pump house.
Both? Pump house or pathway? Because they separated them. Fifty thousand for the pump house, hundred thousand for the pathway.
I'm not seeing it separated there, but I'm thinking just the ADA thing is the thing I'm worried about.
Okay, well, let's, let's put that in here. And then what we're going to do is, is we're going to show you the bottom line. And then we'll get to the harder part of this task. That's just the pathway. That's just the pathway. That's just the pathway, yes.
We haven't even gone through the design phase and it's going to take us a year before we get the project. Let's, let's look at doing it next year, but let's go through, let's, let's direct to do design for this, for this, for this project.
So, so that's another idea would be a smaller allocation, probably twenty thousand, twenty thousand to just do design on this to get the project going.
That, that makes sense because we're not going to be doing it this year.
Because what, what we're going to come to here at the bottom is, is going to be the total and we're going to, we're going to be at a lower fund balance than I would recommend at this stage. So then we're going to have to come back and figure out what we're going to take out of this. And that's going to be challenging.
That's where I want to see where we're going because we, I, I, we're not that well enough to see where we're at.
Yes, exactly.
Let's put in ten thousand for the sanctuary trail markers.
Okay.
Any objections to that?
No, I think, I, I got them on our list.
Okay.
All right.
I got the agreement list here, so.
So, so then we added in the, at this point we have the fifteen thousand for the sidewalk cleaning event. Sidewalk cleaning program. Now, Mayor Norton is exactly right that the, the BIA budget will be coming to the City Council next meeting for consideration. And the City Council has the discretion to approve it or not approve it. And if the budget is not approved, the assessment is not made and the BIA doesn't function.
They're going to need more time to get organized than before next meeting though, so.
Oh, my recommendation, if this was the path you wanted to take, would be to, to talk about it next meeting, but give them a year to put that in place. Let them know that next year you need to see.
We're going to cover it, as Ed said, the pilot program for a year. We're going to do it this year.
And we make it real clear that after that year, we're not covering it all. That's on their shoulders.
I'm stressing, it's real clear that it's a pilot program. It's what I'm only trying to do is prove, can we bring those sidewalks to a level where they, everybody likes them? And how much does that cost? And then after that, it definitely becomes their responsibility. It's definitely a partnership.
Don't call it a pilot program. Because a pilot program means it's something you're going to.
Okay, what do you want to call it?
No, that's, that's good.
Trial. How about trial program?
Temporary.
No, I hate that word. We have a temporary parking lot, okay? How about trial?
How about one-year trial?
One-year trial.
One-year enhanced cleaning program.
One-year enhanced clean, sure.
Okay, okay.
Question. So you talked about the assessmentistic, Jamie. So what is the, um, the options that we have available in terms of assessmentistic? You know, how's it set up? Is Dennis correct that we could actually add something to that budget and make an assessment for it or? I don't understand.
Yeah, the nuances of this, you probably, I'll give you the broad brush summary. But basically you're going to be asked to adopt the budget for the BIA and that also sets the assessment rates. And there's various different types of categories. Restaurants of different sizes, office, retail. So presumably the BIA could have a new category for takeout food, which maybe had a different assessment rate. That would be one option about how this could be dealt with. Alternatively, they could increase the charge on any restaurant, any food service. I think that, that's probably the best vehicle to deal with this. Having a separate assessment district to collect money for twenty-five thousand dollars, frankly, I think, is more bureaucratic hassle than it would be worth. So I think the BIA is the way to do it. The question is, is getting their membership to, um, to get on board to do that. Which so far, you know, they haven't been interested in doing. So I think the question is, the council is, how, how serious is the council going to be about this ultimate direction?
Real serious. So, and when we're talking about twenty-five thousand, are we talking the whole village? Or are we just talking along the front of the restaurants?
So the overall schedule basically, I think, doubles the number of cleanings sort of throughout the village overall. And then, and then goes like three to four times as much on the Esplanade and kind of. Monthly in the summer at the kind of like the key zones.
He's got a plan. He's got a whole plan that he drew up.
Well, you know, and I can understand a member of the BIA being injectable to, to this and, 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 and shared experience with, that they discussed. Because the craft gallery doesn't have the impact that, that Zeldus has. So why should they pay more on it? So, but, but again, that's their problem to work out. And, and we should put it back on them and just say, look, if you don't have one year, we're giving you one year and after that, one year, then, then we, we take our own methods. And maybe it has to be lineal footages in front of.
They're aware of it, Dennis. And, and just like when they advertise. Advertising benefits maybe Beach House Rentals more than it benefits David Ling. But yet they all do a shared assessment. It's not up to us to decide how they assess their members. It's up to them to assess it. Our feedback to them is, this is what you're going to have to come up with. If you like the sidewalks looking like they do, this is what it costs and this is what your portion needs to be. Go figure it out.
I, I agree. But, but it's not an, it's not an alternative. It's just saying, say, you have one year to do this or otherwise we start assessing.
Well, it's unreasonable for us, I think, to try to ask them to do it with the budget coming up now. I think now we just go out and we clean them. And next year, as, as the city manager said, we approve that budget. And if we don't see an allocation in there for sidewalk cleaning, we can deny the budget.
We'll be talking about this next year. I hope you're right. I hope you're right. Okay.
So when we, when we go through all of the items that were included, the staff recommendation and the items the council has identified, we, we would end up with a projected fund balance ending of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars this year. Our recommendation in the past has been to target between a two-hundred to two-hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund balance as closing. So my suggestion, um, I think that the first thing I would suggest considering is potentially taking the facilities fund contribution, which we have right now programmed in at a hundred thousand. I think you could take that down to fifty thousand, particularly given a number of the projects that we are funding kind of on the other side, investing in our existing facilities. That would get us a, a bit closer. I think that the village sidewalk program, the fifty thousand dollars that we're suggesting there, that's intended to be a matching fund. There are some folks that are teed up and would like to do this.
What, what part of the village was that going to be on?
What we've been doing is, is we've been offering it to sort of matching funds to specific businesses. And I know that the folks on Capitola Avenue, um, on the other side of the street below the trestle have expressed some interest in, in partnering with the city once, once we have funding available to do that.
Next year, you think?
Well, with this appropriation, yes, we would have the funding for next year to do that. I think that you probably, my guess is, is that, that, that side basically from the trestle down. Both, well, we've already done this side below the trestle from, in front of the winery.
There's the, the Stockton Avenue. There's a porch to be done there too.
Yeah, there's.
Right.
You know, around David Ling and then from the trestle building. And then on the other side by, uh, the Italian restaurant.
Oh, right. Where we have the.
Rail.
The rail.
The wall. The great, another great wall.
Galvanized rail.
The galvanized rail, of course.
This was taking on the railing, by the way, as an art project.
I think that's a terrific art commission project. So the fifty thousand dollars, does that get us both sides, matching for both sides?
Yeah. And there's, and that's in addition to what we already have in the CIP, so that.
Right, right.
I'd hate to see it take that away.
Right. So the bike facility projects, when we're talking about the sixty thousand, that was including the, the paint for basically the three inner freeway crossings. And, you know, to me, the number one is Forty-First. I mean, I think Forty-First is clearly the intersection where, uh, where that makes the most sense.
You know, we just cut that in half. I, I'm very uncomfortable bringing it lower than sixty thousand.
It's sixty thousand dollars for paint, though. I mean, I, you know, I.
For the green paint.
For the green paint. It's the green paint.
That's a lot of money for green paint.
It's a lot of money for green paint.
I'm, I'm assuming that that, that port, that, that collapsed drain, is it going to get repaired also in that? Is that part of that?
Yeah, we're, we're.
Okay. Yeah.
We pretty much divided that in half. It was just like the seventy-five thousand and everything else.
I guess people have been going in for the green paint, a lot of other cities, really significantly lately. And as a cyclist, paint kind of terrifies me personally. It, it gets wet and it's slippery.
It's not slippery paint. It's, it's.
Wait, hold on, hold on, before we go to that. But one.
It's color plast, isn't it?
It's served for the bicycle day.
It's made for bicycling.
It's thermoplastic.
Thermoplastic, yeah.
So it's applied to the road with heat and it's not slippery when wet.
So one option to consider would be to focus on a couple, you know, the, the Porter Bay intersection is obviously, and the Forty-First are, I think, you know, the two, to me at least, have the highest volumes of traffic.
What we're doing now is slicing and dicing things to make ourselves feel better about the fund balance. Let it roll this way. We always wind up with money at the end because we never get around to these things. So I think we need to plan for this. Leave the fund balance where it is, a hundred and sixty-six.
I'm okay, but I, I mean, say, would you consider, I mean, I don't want to upset the Finance Committee because I love them, but would you consider if we reduced the PERS contingency by fifty thousand? That even in the realm of. I can hear from.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't want to do that, but.
So back to the bicycle thing, um, I, I fall with you, Mike. If we just took out the, um, if we just removed the, um, the Bromer Avenue thing and gave them the rest of signage and everything else on here.
Right.
Just let's do, let's do the whole thing besides the.
Well, that's what we got, that's in there, Dennis. That's.
That's what the sixty thousand is.
Sixty thousand.
No, no, no. Steve said he could cover everything else out of the gas tax. The other fifteen is in the gas tax money? Everything's covered on there. The only thing that I wanted to add to that was I would like to see the Bromer thing. Because I don't overwhelm you. Just go in, we could prioritize that into next year's CIP. The Forty-First.
And we're already, are we in the process of working on design of that whole area there, Steve?
No.
We're not?
No.
How much would it cost us to go through it?
We're trying to figure out what's happening with the property there. Because they, they're, they don't know how they're going to develop it or when.
They don't have any plans.
There's no plan there. That, that could be, he said one to twenty years.
All right. You're probably looking at twenty, thirty thousand dollars with all the survey work that would be required to do that design work. And we may do a preliminary design just so we know where after.
Owns it and it's, believe it, owns it as you might think.
Let it go. Let it go for a while. Okay.
Yeah. I, I think the sixty thousand is going to cover everything that's on the list with the exception of.
You're correct.
Bromer.
Right. I think, I think our city manager was trying to argue to cut the sixty down to increase the fund balance. Well, let's ask the question, is there any other way that you would recommend that you would be comfortable with in increasing the fund balance? Because right now you said it's at one?
One sixty-six.
One sixty-six. I mean, can we get it over two hundred somehow?
So my pitch on the bike facilities was, let's, you know, they're relatively new and I was going to suggest that we test it out in a couple, either Park and Forty-First or just at Forty-First and see how it goes. Oh, sorry. Porter Bay and Forty-First and see how it goes. That being said, it sounds like there's a lot of support for that. So, you know, the, the village drainage assessment, it's, it's a lot of money. Uh, it's certainly a lot of money for something, you know, a project, a problem that's maybe a hundred years old at this point.
It's not going to fix anything.
It's not going to fix anything. So, you know, I think that, that to some degree.
Why are we doing it?
Oh, time out, time out. The, the goal is to try to, the goal is to try and fix it. And what I don't want to do is, we went in there and God bless us, we went in and spent about seventy-five hundred dollars, Steve. Okay? Put in a new grate and a new, and fixed a damaged pipe and it did nothing. Absolutely, Steve, I don't want to pick on you because God bless you for doing it. It did nothing. So that was seventy-five thousand dollars on shooting from the hip.
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred. So what I would rather do, and I'm, I'm anti-consultant, okay? This is, to me, it's not a consultant, it's an engineer. This is a guy that is going to say, this is a problem. You're below C-level.
This is a guy that is going to say, "This is a problem, you're below sea level, you're never going to fix it unless you spend half a million dollars." And, and to me, that resolves the situation, is like, okay, if we've got three bad situations, because we've got three hotspots, pretty much, Steve, in the village.
We could just buy more sandbags, and give them more sandbags, much cheaper than doing anything like this.
You know, I just would like to know, yes or no, can we fix the problem? It's like, it's an investment in finding out if we can fix it. If we don't fix, if it can't be fixed, well, then at least we know it. We, you know, we don't have to guess or speculate anymore, because there's some assumption that we can maybe dig it up and lay three pipes side by side, and triple the amount of water that runs out of there. Well, that's a viable solution, but I don't want to just guess.
Yeah, but you can't triple the amount of water running uphill.
You know what? Let's establish that right now. I've walked it, I've looked at it, I've stood there with my raincoat on when it's pouring rain, and you know what? It still flows. There's, when you get to the quarter of David Ling, there's a twelve-inch drop, and there's some other pipes that are in there. So, I'm not convinced that it can't be fixed, but I don't want to throw any more money at it. I'm willing to pay for an engineer. I'm paying for a professional to fix it. So, how about if you just give me one assessment, Steve? How about if I just get the one in front of Vice assessed for ten thousand dollars? Can I, can I get that?
I'm there with you. Good, you can, now you can take twenty thousand dollars off.
So, we just, we just found twenty thousand dollars, and here's, I think then we can, we can close it, we can get ourselves to two hundred thousand. The claim, from the TOT claim, is actually eighty thousand. I think based on our preliminary estimate, we can knock that down. Let's go with seventy for now.
Yeah, don't give them all the money back yet. Because I'm pretty sure that we're going to raise TOT next year, so there'll be additional revenue because of...
So, I think that, when we squint at that number, it looks to me, just about like two hundred thousand.
That's for Ask Vermont's property, right?
It is.
I'll take it down to sixty. Okay, so, did you reduce the survey to ten, is that in there?
Yes.
Okay, now that brings us up to what, one, one ninety-six? Okay, is there any, is that it? Is that close enough?
That's close, that's great.
We got the tenet courts fixed?
We got everything we ever wanted.